Greeting and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I move with both minutes.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Additions, corrections, comments? Back in any on favor?
Aye.
Those carried. Those communications.
Everything in the packet, all the bills and packet are pretty much the same things that you see. We do have the Finger Lakes Railroad pilot payment invoice that has gone to Finger Lakes Railroad. They're going to make that payment. We do not have the funds yet, but we are approving the dispersment. So we can make sure it gets out within thirty days when that payment comes in. And then there was a renewal for your website. Everything else is standard monthly bills.
Motion approved paying our bills.
So moved.
Hold on a second. Questions, discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those carried. Reported treasurer.
So the financials are in the packet as well. They reflect again, most of those bills that you saw in the packet. Again, revenue, Sam, as last month is all within the interest and savings. Although I understand that for May, we will have some administrative fees coming in. Big, big bunches of administrative fees coming in due to some closings on projects that have been approved. So your May financial statement should include those. And then the expenses, you can see the audit, the second payment for the audit that is all paid for at this point. And everything else is the monthly bills.
Motion approved. The report. I'm moved. Discussion, questions?
Tracy, all pilots for Burton shade, right?
The only outstanding invoice is for Finger Lakes Rail, but that just went out last week. Last week, this week?
This week.
This week. Time is hard. So that one's still within its appropriate timeframe. All of the January ones have been paid and dispersed.
Further questions? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasurer's report approved. Executive Director's update.
As everyone has an impact as normal as my monthly written report. It's typical. I have some walk on additions to that from a project status update. As Tracy may mention too, over the last month, the board approved Finger Lakes Rail, Sunburn Sales and Kuga Milk's projects. We are in the process of moving those ports to close. We did successfully close on the Kuga Milk project. Yesterday, I believe we're still waiting close on Finger Lakes Rail. Hopefully today by the time this meeting is over and over the next couple of weeks, we will be advancing Sunburn Sales project through close. We do have Charlie Belko on the line to present his project for Denkavec later in the meeting here today. The Emily Holland Restoration Project, still waiting for a grand announcement on that of whether or not the project is approved. If so, the developer will move forward on that project and will be seeking IDA benefits. If not, I do believe the developer has other projects in the northern part of the county. Lastly, on the project update portion here, there is a substantial commercial housing project planned in the town of Brutus. Later this year, I had a chance to speak with the developer late last week. It's my understanding, the intended project has very strong support from the town. They're also going to be seeking grants from the state and they are also interested in IDA benefits. So as that project moves forward in terms of its financial feasibility, we'll be engaged with them. And I think it'd be a great project for the IDA to consider once they do apply on that. On our sewer project here, we are nearing completion for the ESD grant. Then going back and forth to Steve, I know he sent me some material just earlier this afternoon to review for the WMBE waiver. Once that is done, we've been assured that ESD will be looking to disperse funds over the next month here. And from that, we can proceed in closing out the IDA grant as well. So finally, some good progress on that. I do hope by our July meeting to have that all completed. On the stakeholder engagement side of items, continuing to meet collaboratively with our local partners on a biweekly basis and at least monthly with representatives from Empire State as well as our central New York region of IDA members. Last week, as noted last month, I was a panel guest for the tourism office. It was a great event, well attended. A lot of the discussion from the panel perspective was around economic development and tourism's impact on that. So as said, I thought it was a great, great event, well attended and a big thanks to Karen Cool and Tourism Office for inviting us and hosting us at that one there. Next week, I'll be attending the New York State EDC Conference. This is over in Cooperstown. It's from May twenty first to the twenty third. I think Tracy can confirm it's the single largest and probably most important conference for economic development throughout the year. So it is a great networking opportunity. You get a lot of exposure that you otherwise don't have. Continuing to go through the New York State Growing Certified Infrastructure and Tech Grants. Mostly through my assigned portion of that, we'll be doing reviews of the grants over the next couple of months with other reviewers. Moving that forward, as noted last month, I did request to the governing body there that site then is considered for the work I'm doing to have that committed to the IDA, the amount of which I don't know, but I am putting in a good chunk of time towards it. So making sure the IDA sees some benefit out of that. Wells College Sales, still going through that process there. I'm still in touch with a couple of interested developers as recent as today. Still no updates as to where Wells College is in the cell of the campus, but still remains a big item of interest that not just their locally, but certainly from state as well. On our operations side of items, as Tracy again mentioned, a lot of activity is going to show up in next month's financials from these closings here. We did also close out everything in our Generations checking account effective today. Our CD matured that we committed to last July. It was a ten month CD. We made about sixteen grand on it there. I put those monies into our Kuga Lake Money Market Account, which is doing fantastic. It's right around four percent. And we do also have a new pilot specific checking account set up at Kuga Lake National Bank as well. So we have our primary checking, we have our money market, and we now have a designated pilot checking as well. I did get the updated rate sheet from them just a day or so ago to take a look at other products that the board may consider going into next month if we want to drop some money into a couple of CDs. One of the things I'd like to recommend to the board, considering the growth of our funds, is to start identifying specific uses for those funds going forward, whether it be board land, acquisition improvements, operational expenses, other economic development initiatives, whatever it is. But to put together a policy around that and burn that up as we go forward from this year, this year on. That's everything I have on this end, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm not sure this is the right place, but Grace, we're supposed to have a dedicated account for land purchasing.
We used to have one.
That's news to me. Since I've been with the IDA, I haven't seen that, but we could certainly.
Remember Trace, we had one?
That's why I brought it. I thought when, when we get to the.
John, you remember, we had one. It was on a separate line.
Yeah, no, I don't, right.
Okay, I thought we did.
When you were getting.
But that's what I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, we're getting reasonably close to closing on the sale of those lots. And I thought that would be the right time to try to establish an account for the purchase of land. And my view would be we should have our treasurer go back and see how much money we have actually gotten from the sale of land to the milk plant. And that would be a basis to start an account with, and the board can be, could decide how much and how to do it. But if we, if we had the original sale of the lots plus the sale of these two lots, that would be a basis to start it with. And I, I think now that we basically don't have any land there left, it's time that we seriously look at some more purchases. But maybe the treasurer could get those numbers together for our next meeting and then we can decide how to proceed with it. John, is that?
Yeah, yeah. And that's what you were referencing when you said to Secretary Gay.
That's why I brought it up at this time. It goes in with what his report was.
Yep.
And that makes sense. And I want to say.
Thank you.
Sure.
Questions for a director?
Yeah, Mike, on the with the sewer with the contractor? Will they settle all that out then or?
Yeah. And so this is where on the WMBE waiver process, we've gone back and forth with ESC on this for six months. They continuously ask for more and more information. We were promised this last request for information should be the last one. So as, as mentioned, Steve has worked with contractor, gathered this latest set of information. I'm going to be reviewing that tomorrow, getting in touch with ESC and hopefully that puts it to bed. And we will finally figure out if they're going to waive it or if they're going to issue a penalty. Either way, it gives us some path forward to say, okay, we know what we're working with now and can get on to the other portions. This has been holding us up for some time.
But then, all right, so after that, then we should be able to settle the contract.
Yes. That's just that, this has just been.
That's the world of grants.
Yes, it is.
And Michael, the penalties?
That's wrapped up in the WMBE waiver. So depending on how that waiver goes, we can then have that discussion either.
You guys just froze up on us. I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Sorry, everyone online. Can you hear us here?
Yep, we got your back.
Okay, great.
We did lose one of the other gentlemen that were on the call though.
Speak to the project. Details are within the resolution here, but I do think best for Mr. Belko to speak to the project directly. Mr. Belko, if you don't mind describing your project.
Okay, so currently we spend quite a bit of money on offsite storage and it has a logistics issue and a cost issue. We spend about seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars a year in offsite storage. So we're looking to add in addition to our plant that's a hundred by two hundred. It would be attached to the existing building, so it is an addition. And it's just warehouse space. It doesn't really add people, but it keeps us in the area because we're a very small margin plant. And you know, it's hard to, it's hard to consume the, the extra money that we're spending to ship goods between here and Seneca Falls. We also have twenty-six fifty-foot, fifty-three foot trailers on site that we also use for storage. So what we're looking to do is put this addition on the plant. I don't know what else I could add to that. You know, it's just a building. Building will help us be a little more profitable. So you guys are all frozen again. I don't know if you can hear me.
Well, I could hear you, Charlie. I don't know about them.
Okay. Yeah, I only, I only see the gentleman in the middle.
This is the packet, public information?
Hello? Did you get, did you get any of that or do I do it again?
We got a good chunk of that.
I have an extra. Oh, your property's here. Sorry.
Sorry.
So can I answer any questions or would you like me to repeat?
Hear everything or not?
I, I didn't know.
Charlie, do you mind if I just quickly resummarize the project?
No, not at all. Because you know what, what part got heard?
Yes. So, so in essence, the project is a warehouse expansion on Denkavec's property. They're going to be purchasing a small portion of acreage from Kuga Milk Ingredients to accommodate the warehouse expansion. The reason for the expansion itself is they're spending a great deal of money doing offsite storage and it's, it's hurting the business as their application IDA to make it financially feasible.
Yeah, the purchase of the property is so that we have the proper setbacks. The, the new building would be entirely on the lot that we currently have. But in order to achieve the setbacks and also we'd be consuming about twenty parking spaces with the new building. So on the purchase from CMI, we would be relocating those twenty parking spots and keeping the setbacks needed.
Not sure how much of this you want in open session, but when we agreed to sell those lots to CMI, part of the agreement was that this group needed to do an expansion and that they was willing to sell them part of the land to do. Is there any idea of an additional expansion or is this the only expansion that you anticipate?
So this is the only expansion we anticipate currently, you know? The, the part of the lot that we're purchasing is separated by the, the improvements they're putting on the rest of the lot by a stream that's seasonal. You know, so that, that portion of the lot would never be used by CMI and it's why they agreed to sell it to us. You know, so the, the lots are separated by a physical barrier that's only present in high raining rainy times. And it separates the two lots.
My concern is that there's no more land there, only what CMI has bought. And I'm concerned that if there's any need for future expansion, that I'm not sure warehouse is the most variable use of that land. CMI, we, we had a meeting with them on the electrical thing that was part of your minutes. And they are going to need additional electricity. We bet was Kapouska and them. I think it was Monday. And they mentioned their need for, for possible warehouse space with rail access. They appear to think that there is warehouse space available with rail siding without having to use that property for warehousing. So.
The majority of this warehouse is on Denkavec's property.
A hundred percent of the warehouse would be on, on Denkavec's property. What, what we need is, is the, you have to have a certain amount of land around the building for the fire department to drive. All right. And, and we don't have that. You know, so the entire warehouse is on our current lot and then there's still a lot next to us that, that unless it was sold recently, I think it's lot eleven, we're ten. And we're purchasing portion of four that's open. You know, that also borders us and CMI.
And that would be adequate for any additional expansion that you could.
Yeah, it's a, it's a ten or an eleven acre lot.
Remember local labor content?
I believe Charlie had mentioned you're going to be using eighty plus percent local labor.
Yeah. Eighty percent local rate, local being Syracuse, Rochester and Auburn.
That's, that's within our policy. It's not within Kuga County, it's within the surrounding region. And as we advance the project for, we'll get further numbers around that.
All right, great.
So we're just looking for sales now?
No, as part of this project, because the expansion is on the facility of which we have an existing pilot, is to also discuss with the firm an extension of that existing pilot as well.
Does cover the addition.
So there's a motion to go forward. I can read the resolution and do a roll call.
So moved. A second.
All right. So again, page thirty-six. Resolution of the Kuga County IDA, one, accepting the application of Denkavec Holdings USA Corporation with respect to a certain project. Two, authorized scheduling and conduct of a public hearing with respect to the project. Three, describing the forms of financial assistance being contemplated by the agency. And four, authorizing the negotiation of certain agreements related to the project. I'll advance the roll call here. Ms. Adams is currently absent. Mr. Robert Shea.
Yes.
Mr. John Latnition.
Yes.
Mr. Ray Lockwood.
Yes.
Mr. Herb Marshall.
This is to set up the public hearing, Andrew.
This is to accept the project. So Mr. Marshall says yes. Ms. Spino is absent. Mr. Andrew Rhineflesh.
Yes.
Resolution passes. Questions? All right. Thank you, Charlie. We will be in touch and looking forward to working with you on this.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time.
Unfinished business, FLX support request.
As you recall from last month, we did have some discussion here. I'm hoping Tracy has an update for us one way or another. So Finger Lakes support request is mentioned. This is more of a marketing support request. As noted last month, Senator Mike Mizzolio had reached out to me about supporting their organization. Their initial marketing dollar request was for seventy-five hundred dollars. My recommendation at the time was this should be a joint effort amongst our other economic partners being CCDC and Auburn IDA. What was done last month was to table this item. So if you all want to have further discussion on it, we can or not. Tracy, I don't know if.
So this is one of the weird months where Ava is meeting after CCIDA. We're not meeting until the twenty eighth, so Ava has not met since last meeting.
Okay.
Have, have you heard from it? So you haven't heard from Ada and CCDC?
No.
So I, I'll move to table it until next month until we do.
I just had a chance to motion.
Discussion on the table. All favor? Oh. Carry. Okay, anything, any other unfinished? Preliminary authorization resolution. Project acquisition of agency lands.
So as agreed by the board last month, this is to advance via resolution for the acquisition of lots nine, ten, eleven, in addition to a certain roadway within the Aurelius IDA Park by Kuga Milk Ingredients Eagle Drive Holdings.
Can I just stop you? So we just heard Charlie mentioned eleven is still open. But it's not according to this.
According to this, no.
No, okay.
That's why I was concerned about them building a warehouse if it was going to need any of that land for expansion. But apparently he doesn't think they do.
The milk plant as well as Denkavec have been very good neighbors to each other. My understanding from Kuga Milk is a principal interest in lot eleven, which borders Denkavec. They wouldn't want all of it. So I, I believe going forward, they could work out an agreement just as they've done for mutual interest here that milk plant sold a portion of their property to Denkavec's.
And they had agreed with that sale agreement to do that with them.
Yeah. And that's what this helps kick off for us here is we have to go through a ninety day notice period before we can do any finalization of sale plans on all of that. So it also puts forward secret on the property, making sure all those items are checked off. And we'll probably close on this pending board full authorization, September, October.
And they have a working relationship.
Yes. That's a customer, you know, plan.
Do you want a motion on?
Yes.
I, I moved it with both a certain.
Motion made seconded. We approved the sales of his four major lots.
So let me read the resolution and I can move to a roll call. So resolution, the Kuga County IDA, one, accepting the application of Eagle Drive Holdings LLC with respect to a certain project. Two, authorizing scheduling and conduct of a public hearing with respect to the project. Three, describing the forms of financial assistance being contemplated by the agency. Four, authorizing the negotiation of certain agreements relating to the project. And five, authorizing the issuance of a notice of disposition with respect to certain real estate owned by the agency. I've been roll call here. Missana Adams currently absent. Mr. Robert Shea.
Yes.
Mr. John Latnition.
Yes.
Mr. Ray Lockwood.
Yes.
Mr. Herb Marshall.
Yes.
Ms. Gina Spino is absent. Mr. Andrew Rhineflesh.
Yes.
Which advances, I'll work with our, our attorneys and moving this forward and we'll keep the board updated over the next couple of months.
Hey, bank recommendations?
So I feel I, I covered this earlier on this topic here. So we, we close out of Generations Bank as recommended by the board. They are converting into a credit union probably over the next month or two here. I've been very pleased with the service and the rates we've been receiving from Kuga Lake. As noted earlier, I think the segregation of funds for specific purposes is going to be very important as we progress through this year and we'll work to pull together that information related to the sale of land previously and setting up a separate account or monies for the specific, specific purpose. setting up a separate account or monies for the specific specific purpose of the acquisition and improvement of lands going forward. Likely with additional recommendations around other use of funds by and for the IDA, including operations, workforce development. And as we've set up through our our labor mitigation fees and related items.
Question. Pipeline update.
So this is on the back of your packet. What this generally outlines for you here going along the top, left to right, is the location, the type of industry, the project type, meaning what what this applicant may be interested in, status of the project, size, total investment dollars, IDA benefits sought, including land, the timing of that, as well as estimated IDA fees. So as you'll see, going to the very bottom, it's a substantial amount of money principally driven by renewable energy projects. As as a result, our pipeline fee of activity is significant here. While those I I believe to be really game-changing projects in one form or another, I am much more focused and concerned with doing the smaller projects as they are moving at a much faster pace. They're not subject to as much state approvals and going forward there and their timelines are substantially shorter. So evidence of that is recently the Sunburn Sales Project, which we initiated earlier this year and we're working to close that this month over a three, four-month period. It's much more realistic. That being said, it's not to ignore the larger ones. It's just the focus is around some of our smaller projects here. This does not include some more abstract projects out there. These are much more realistic confirmed ones that I've been in touch with the developers and have heard in one form or another commitment in moving the project forward and applying for IDA benefits. And I believe, you know, sifting through this, you can know which one is which, but for confidentiality sake, left out the actual developer name and related down there. Happy to have any conversation around it though.
Well, it's quite a list though.
So and I do keep and maintain this as anything's coming in or or we're closing out.
Gentlemen, why are you here?
Mr. Jim, if I can speak on that behalf.
They're not on the agenda.
Well, I ran it by Andy. There there are guests. I asked them to account tonight because I thought with Andy's proposal to the planning in the spirit of cooperation, I wanted their faces here to introduce themselves to to just to start a working relationship with the IDA. They're members of my board of Kaposha. This is Fred Kerr.
Yeah, I know him.
And Tim's um.
And I don't know.
I'm Blake Turner of New Core Steel.
Okay.
Bob invited me to come.
Oh.
Well, sorry, I didn't connect with you before.
That's okay. I was told that you weren't coming because you got run by corporate first, so.
Welcome. It was over the pop-in, yeah.
Yeah, great. That's awesome. So very happy to have you here.
Good discussion? Or just introduction?
No, just an introduction.
Oh, that's all. Okay, I didn't know if you had. Some map. Quiet.
No.
Thank you. Any words of wisdom while you're here?
Thank you for letting me be here.
Being the important person you are.
Nice to sneak down the road to get here, so.
Thanks. Everybody know Peter? Freddie? Timmy? Yep, everybody knows.
Motion to, motion to adjourn that?
Yeah. A couple minutes. Upcoming events.
I I would say there's a couple of items for executive session to note there.
Still the upcoming events, then we're going.
Upcoming events, but it's not on here. I'll first touch on this is AVO training. This is posted every month. If you haven't taken this over the last couple of years, let me know. I will get you signed up for it. Everything's online. Just let me know. Second, as shared with the board earlier this week, Cuba Milk has planned ribbon cutting for their latest expansion. It is for June eighteenth. I've shared the invite around. Can't remember the exact time. Is it ten o'clock? Okay. So I very much believe as many of the board members that can be there should be there. This is a substantial project that you have supported since its inception. It's been a great project for Cuba County as well as the state of New York. It's going to be well attended. So if you can attend, please do let me know. I I am looking to get back to Brian and their team for who whom from our board is planning to attend. And also will make recommendations of who else can and should be attending. What dialogue with Andy is water and sewer. Should have some representatives. The sewer project was major part of this plant expansion. I believe David Botar, if he hasn't been invited, absolutely should be included in that. I do believe county leadership should be there.
Yeah, I can. But Ben and he, I think they've done a lot.
I I I would also say members from the city of Auburn as well. Their their municipal director, more than likely members from city council or or other department has that have helped support it their their expansion as well. So.
The two managers were invited. I see that on the list.
That's good. That's good. I'm glad to hear that. So that's a quick spitball of whom I'm looking to get back to Brian and their team. But if you have any recommendations yourself, I can help pass that along instead of, you know, multiple channels going out there. Okay. That said, on upcoming.
Motion voting executive session.
I I keep thinking of, okay, this list that you've given us, there's only one solar project on this list, is it?
This list here. There is solar, renewable energy. You can count that as interchangeable. So renewable energy.
That would be a solar project also, renewable and.
A well, if you look at the target area, that is really the turbine project.
Okay. While these other people are here, I think it's really important for us to work with Kaposka to acquire as much energy from these projects to be able to be used locally as we can. When we met with the milk plant, they impressed us that they you need for electricity with the project that's coming online is going to, was it not double the amount that they currently have? And with the project they're planning, it's going to be even more increase in energy. And not that we need to just help them and and Newport uses a tremendous amount of energy. It's a major part of their expenses. I think us working with this group and trying to set aside as much of that energy that's produced here to stay here is very, very, very important. And I would like us to develop a relationship with them, especially on this energy thing, so that we can continue working on that.
The problem with the problem with the green energy is a lot of this contracted to California when they're when they're building these facilities. I I dealt with them when when we were doing the energy problem.
That's absolutely right, but.
Yeah, I disagree with you.
All all of them, all of them need pilots in order to make them work. And I think we have the ability to work into the pilot thing, some way of keeping that energy here.
That's the only time you have leverage.
That's the only time we have any leverage. And and I I just I just think continue working with them on this energy is is really important.
There's supposed to be a local benefit of community benefit. My son gets ten percent. The farm gets nothing. Nothing because we're commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They just got this big denied right across the face of their poor farm.
But their need for a pilot gives us a little bit of an ability to negotiate with them, and I think we should take advantage of that.
So if I'm hearing you properly, as as anyone renewable energy project comes forward and application of pilot, Kaposha should be invited to the table.
I I would like to have that as part of it if if that's satisfactory with with this board. I think it's very important to do that, yes.
So what are we, River, are we talking about not not to get too far into this because this isn't a Kaposha meeting? Are we talking about directly hooking into? Because once it leaves the solar panel, it goes into the grid. It's in the grid. It's.
John.
So I don't I don't know what specifically we're.
I I you know, Don Montone is sitting next to you.
You can do different interpretations.
He he's way more knowledgeable about it than I am, and he's the vice chairman.
Well, we're not going to get into a meeting here.
But but there is a way of doing that. There's a way of of acquiring the power and Kaposha has a state. It was approved with a with a some kind of a referendum so that they have state approval to acquire power and distribute power and have the ability to do it, which we're one of the very, very few counties in the state that have that ability to do that.
The only county.
So will will Kaposha be coming back to us with a proposal of how they will accomplish this?
I would I would let, I'm getting too over over my head in this, John. I I I would like us to work with them in a manner that lets us lets us use their ability to protect ourselves for.
You probably need some advice from Justin Miller.
Right, but I I I think if we're gonna work with, I we need to understand how this will will work. So a proposal as to how what what.
Well, right now it's standing. Right now it's just a thought.
Right. Mr. Shea, why don't you work up with John a proposal to present to the group?
And you run it through Mike while you're doing this.
Yes. Yeah, yes, let Mike know how how we can work together to accomplish something there.
Okay. Anything else?
Right.
I okay. Yeah, we need a motion to go into executive session to acquisition of lands and properties.
Did Tim have something?
I just want to say that New Core is having a birthday, their fiftieth.
Oh.
Birthday is going to be on the twenty-eighth. They're going to have it up at Emerson and you know, I appreciate the fact that my first job coming out of West Virginia University was for Haggard down there. And I I didn't know anybody, but I just signed up and they gave me a job.
You hardly look old enough. You had coffee back then? Is there a motion to go into executive? I love. Second. Is there a second?
Second.
You two can stay if you want to. I mean, and then on favor. Those.
I just want to go see the guy.
Thank you, guys. Why are we saving a spot for her? She's in the other room.